Hi, you want?
Yes.
Yes, all right. I just got your message.
All right, I have seven fifteen. Chair.
All rise. Harville County Court, county attorney, county office. Harville Dwight Jewell will be deciding this court's main station. Harville Dwight Jewell.
Well, I know what's the mouth saying, kind of being honorable. Our invitation tonight is by Gary Parry and a pledge by Linda Sue Johnson.
Let's all bow. Our kind gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this day, dear heavenly father. Thank you for all the blessings, dear lord. We ask to heavenly father to be thy will, to watch over the ones that are sick in body, dear heavenly father, that your will restore them back to their health, dear lord. Ask you to be with us here tonight, dear heavenly father, as we do things that need be here tonight, dear heavenly father. Go with us down through life, lead us, guide us in all the things we need to do, dear heavenly father, in Christ's name and prayer, amen.
Please, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like we've got a good crowd with us tonight. Appreciate everybody taking time to come out for this special call meeting and mayor college meetings tonight. And we have a very short agenda. Get right into it. All we can do with tonight is what's on the agenda. And Matt Clark, if you're calling, roll with us.
Beverly Atwood here. Mary Ann Baker here. Ken Bugwester.
Here.
Shane Merton.
Here.
Gary Parry.
Here.
Coy Dickey. Bill Ferguson.
Here.
Jerry Ford.
Here.
Bubba Gregory.
Here.
Landon Gully.
Here.
Richard Harsh.
Here.
Dwight Jewell.
Here.
Linda Johnson.
Here.
Richard Johnson.
Here.
Rachel Jones.
Here.
David Noller. Amber Russell. Lonnie Taylor.
Here.
Gary Walsh.
Here.
Steve Whitaker.
Here.
Seven fifteen, red.
We just have a form. Mayor, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've mentioned in this committee, in front of commission, a few times about the 2020 multi-mobile grant from TDOT. This is a grant that can be used to do various projects. What we submitted was, what we're proposing to do is fund some of its reconstruction of the sidewalk, some of the construction of the new sidewalk from the end of the street state project here on Broadway up to the McMurray and McMurray and Broadway intersections. What was originally planned during the transportation planning in 2017 was to have sidewalks on both sides. We had a meeting, a Zoom meeting with our RPO coordinator, Mark Dudley, who's participating with, he's on Zoom tonight, simply in case we've got any questions. And an engineer from Midtown Engineering named Chris Blue, who was giving the budget for us, no charge, so we really appreciate the Midtown Engineering doing that for us. And the original budget that got sent out was 1.3 billion, and that was for sidewalks on both sides of Broadway, again, from the end of the street state all the way up to the McMurray and Broadway intersections. That would make the county share almost $300,000. We had a Zoom meeting to talk about how can we make some changes, maybe get it down, because this, this grant is a 95, 5% grant, up to a max, the state will go up to 950,000, which means your total project cost could be a billion, which makes the county share about $50,000, they pay 950,000. In that discussion, asked me if we had to change it, what would I thought would need to be left in, and I said, well, given that there is enough room on the right, if you're going from Main Street up to McMurray Boulevard, there's enough room on the right side of open asphalt, people can walk there okay. And there's an existing sidewalk, even though it's no longer ADA compliant, some parts of it need to be repaired on the left side. However, if you go from Depot Street, where the depot is, up the hill towards Citizens Bank, here Lego is getting more and more people on it, and some of them are having to walk out the road, especially a gentleman that's in a power wheelchair. So I thought that was the most dangerous section, so I proposed that if we're at least going to do something, let's do that. In further discussions with Mr. Blue earlier today and Mr. Dudley, I had originally thought, and I'd sent out an email to this effect, that we were just cutting the project down and only do on the right side, traveling north on Broadway from Depot Street to the McMurray and Broadway intersections. And speaking with Mr. Blue earlier today, he suggested that we cut out, if you're traveling north from about Depot Street up to the intersection, cut out those residences that are on the left, because that would have issues with right of way and other issues already. Cut that out of the project and leave the rest in there. And the reason he says to do, he recommends to do that is because TDOT will go through the process, they'll let you cut your project area down, however, you can expand it from what you propose. So if we propose doing, like I said, should break the, cutting out one side of the project from where Hartsfield Good Year is up to the McMurray Boulevard intersections, basically cutting down everything on the Sonic side of the road, that gets us down to this new budget that I passed out earlier today, and I apologize, it's off the small, it runs off the small, I apologize for that. Total project cost will be one million, $9,999.97, which the state will cover 949,999.97, and the county share of that will be 50,000. If you look on that far right side, it's going to say 60,000. The reason for that is Mr. Blue has looked at where the state's right of way is, and he's not sure if that sidewalk will be able to stay completely in the state right of way or not, or if it would require more. And there's going to have to be movement of some utility poles, and he's not sure that TDOT's going to cover relocation of those poles, given that there's eligibility requirements that it may not need. So we would have to cover that cost. So that would add 10,000 or 50,000, making our county share 60,000. As I said, this is a very, very competitive grant. It's actually one of the most competitive the state puts out, and it's because the state's going to cover 95% of the project expense, and the county's going to pick up 5% of the county's expense. And speaking with Mr. Dudley, if you could crack me if I'm on, if you want some chip in, at any time, Mr. Dudley, please go ahead. We feel like this has got a pretty good chance going forward, it's going very well, given that this was part of a transportation planning grant that was given by the state. We had a plan that was done, we went through a lot of steps, getting public feedback and all that stuff, we have a good idea, I feel very strongly that it will score well. And this is strictly 100% on the state right of way, which would, excuse me, the state route, which will make it score even better, and it addresses pedestrian and ADA issues with a dangerous section of road, so we think that'll make it score well. I still want to reiterate, this is a very competitive grant, there's no guarantee we're going to get this. My personal feelings, if we do get something, I feel we're either going to get, go ahead and do the engineering, I think TDOT will do that, or they'll fund part of, I mean, cut it down to a certain project area and call it, do it in phases, which I would recommend. If we're going to do that, we do the phase from Depot Street up to the McMurray Boulevard on that right side heading north. And that's kind of my feedback right now, and I think Mr. Dudley's unmuted himself, so if he's got something to add, I'll let him go ahead and add that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, and thank all of you all. You did a really good job summarizing the project, and I would just reiterate the fact that you've got planning grants in place, and that you, there's another TDOT grant there with the Hartsfield Connectivity Project, that is strong leverage in your favor. The twin main criteria for this grant is safety and connectivity, and so it's all completely on a state route, so you are connecting people from where they live more safely to where they shop, do their business, go to the bank, go to the government offices, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a, it's a pretty good poster boy kind of project for this, for this grant. And we, I have had some of these where they were, they split them up, and then like we've had one in Lafayette where they awarded the full 950,000. So that one had a planning grant in place too. So this, you all have a solid project. In the world of grants that I work in, this is, this is the golden egg, because it is a, it's nearly 100% state investment of infrastructure in your community. So because of that, they are competitive, but I think you all are in a good position for this. So thank you all for your time, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions if anybody has any.
What's the timeline?
The original, excuse me, the original timeline for us filing our application was going to be tomorrow, however, the state has had some issues with their site, so they've moved that to November 9. As far as looking at actually starting construction on this project, it's at least two years, two to three years, at least two. Because I think Hackett County got theirs first funding years ago, Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir. And the way that one has worked is that TDOT sort of kept and did the first phase, the environmental phase themselves, and so, you know, you can't go on to the next phase until that one is finished. But, you know, if we apply tomorrow or Monday, then we'll know something in a few months, and then they, you know, they get the contract out and so forth, and so, you know, the wheels grind slowly, but they do grind long. So again, it's a, it's a great project if you can get it.
Did you understand right? So if you had the Goodyear going up towards the red light, it's going to be on the left-hand side, correct?
Let's say, I'm standing right here, and I'm looking, I'm, Goodyear's behind me, and I'm looking up towards Sonic. Everything on the left-hand side, where you've got all those houses, all those people parked next to the road, will be cut out of the project. And that's to get it down to where it meets the $1 million cap basically that state puts on it. And the other reason is because that's very tight through there, if you take away some of that parking, I don't know where they're going to go, and also you get into right-of-way issues and that stuff, it's just a big headache to deal on that side of the road. So basically, that stretch would be taken out of what was originally proposed in the planning.
Is there going to be a cross, will there be any crosswalks in?
There is currently, well, you look at, that'll go through the planning, that'll go through the planning commission, everything. The only question is, as far as crossing, this is something Mr. Dickey had asked before. When they're redoing the intersection up here, they did not put any crossings in there. Speaking of Mr. Blue earlier today, he advised me to reach out to TDOT and see if we can get that amended, to put crossing there and pedestrian lights to get people across to them. He doesn't think that's a big change from what they've already got, so I'm going to reach out to TDOT, see if we can get that project changed, and that will affect this one as well, because this project will be constructed after that is done, if we get this grant. So that we can connect to an existing sidewalk with the crossing lights and all that kind of stuff. So we're going to try to reach out to TDOT, see if we can get that put in the intersection improvement, which will be a different project than this one.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We had a man about three months ago, he was in a motorized wheelchair, and he was crossing from the depot going up towards Sonic on the right side, we were about putting it, and a car he was, he was crossing the intersection there, and knocked him about 10 foot, blew the air, but he was okay. He had to go to hospital, he was okay. Because that's a bad spot right in there.
Yeah, and that's one of the things we're hoping to address with this project, is keep people safe off the road, because right now, especially if you're going up that right side, on the side of the administration buildings, and the closer you get to top that hill, you're further out in the road, especially the gentleman in the wheelchair, I've seen him completely out in one of the lanes of traffic, and even people walking up through there, if you've got somebody that parks on that side, well, they're out in the road as well. So hopefully this should be able to address that issue, and connect residential areas with commercial areas, you've got your banking, your shopping, government offices, that kind of thing. So that's why I think it'll score, I think it'll score well. Now, how well is it going to do, that just depends on what we're up against, but. And is there any other questions for Mr. Dudley? Yes, sir.
When will we know if we got the grant?
We'll shoot know in a few months. They'll get back to us in Milnova, if we got the full grant, or if it's going to be pared down to some other phase or something like that. And I'll, is that somewhere right as far as timeline, you, Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir. And they, you know, depending on what they have going on, too, it's sort of, they may say, well, it'll be here, and then they'll move it back a month. But it's usually not too long before they announce it, maybe a couple of, three months. I will say another thing about when you're talking about the, making it safer, in a lot of the communities in the upper Cumberland, just by putting in safe ADA compliant sidewalks and making it safer, you also make it a more attractive place for the walkability, which helps your shops and your economic development, so it's all tied together. And so this is sort of a win-win across the board if you can get it.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, you say two or three years down the road to start this project. Is this, with these estimated project costs, is this going to turn into another street state to where two or three years down the road, they say, this is all you get?
Well, this is a different kind of grant. That money was coming from the federal government through a beautification type of grant, and that one originally, I think, they were going to give it 1.5, 1.6, something like that, and I think it got cut down to about 850, so they shrunk the project area. This one, they'll go through and look at the projects, and it's a cap, the state will go up to 950,000. So that's, that's it, that's what they're going to go up to and score your project. So there might be change in construction costs going forward, but right now, we're basing it on the estimate that we've got. If it does change, I'm sure TDOT will work with you to try to make some changes to the project area. But at this point, based on what we got now, I know it's two or three years down the road, just.
Changes to the project areas as to cutting the sidewalk short?
It could be cutting sidewalk short, it could be it turns out that we didn't need any extra right-of-way, there could be a lot of things go through, actually go through the planning phases of it.
Just to comment, because a lot of people walk up through there, it is a very dangerous place. But I was wondering, somebody got the one wrong room killed.
There's probably more pedestrian traffic in that section than any one.
We're walking towards apartments down there and all the way up there.
Now, I will say, I give full disclosure here, this will come out of the urban services building, given that the sidewalks are in the urban services and under the charter, services are strictly in, certain districts have to be paid for by that district. And speaking with Ms. Thomas, given how this grant works, it is reimbursement grant. And right now, TDOT, even on the street state, is requiring us to go ahead and pay the contractors and then submit for reimbursement with proof of payment. Right now, the process time is roughly 60 days from the date we submit the payment. If you include us getting our paperwork together and then getting the payment back from TDOT, it's about three months. We are going to have to pay for it upfront, submit for reimbursement, and get it reimbursed to us. Ms. Thomas and I are a little concerned on the cash flow, how that's going to work out, the fund balance and everything. We think we're okay, given that we're going to have reimbursements coming in, after you get it started, it'll come in regularly after that, it'll be about three months from the time you submit, but it should start being up after that. And the contractors are going to bill you monthly, so you won't be paying for the complete project upfront. And when all is said and done, if we get the reimbursement, it'll be states reimburse us up to 95% of the project cost. So those are some concerns Ms. Thomas and I have, and in full disclosure to the commission so you know exactly what it is you're voting on. And the resolution that Mr. Dudley wrote, and then Ms. Thomas's custom for Trasado County, it limits the county's contribution on the grant match to 50,000, it's no more than 50,000, that's why Mr. Blue worked to get it down, we are meeting what the state's, the cap the state's going to put on it. So at this point, the way the resolution is written, the county will be out no more than the 50,000 under that grant, if there is no utility relocation, and we're probably going to have to pay for that. Yes, sir.
Are we going to put out bids for the contractors, or is that something the state handles?
We will go through the process, and I'm going to let Mr. Dudley go through this a little bit. The state has a manual that's about 200 and something pages long about how you have to do procurement if you give them other grants. It will be competitively bid out, and there will be, hopefully, a lot of contractors put in for it, but right now, you don't know. So it'll be competitively bidding, and then once we do get the bids, we have to turn those back into the state, and the state has to review them and approve whatever the bids are, so.
Yeah, I would just add to that, it's the, it's the federal local government guidelines, and so for a TDOT project, whether you're talking about a multimillion dollar thoroughfare or an enhancement project along the square, a small project, you have to use, you go by their rules, or you don't play at all. And so they, they, you go by their procurement process about how it's bid out. Obviously, the brunt of the cost of this will be when you get into construction, so when you're, when you're looking at budgeting, you know, you can try to budget based on when it looks like, you know, your most costly years of the phase are going to be, you know, so the NECA document, the environmental, and the design and so forth will not be as expensive as when they get in the material and so forth. But, yeah, once, once we get it, they have a pre-approved list of people that you can bid out to, and you go by, you go by their rulebook.
Yes, sir.
If approved, what budget year are you anticipating the fund draw?
Well, the reason we're here tonight is because part of the application is the mayor's office needs to submit a letter of basically the support, saying we understand that the project costs are 5% of the match if we get it. The reason that we're coming to the county commission is obviously this is an allocation of money. I cannot commit a single dime from the county, I have to come back to the county commission to get this. So right now, I would think, and this is something that Ms. Thomas and I helped him with, I'm not sure if we'll start doing the allocation the next fiscal year or the one beyond that. I really think it'll be the one beyond that, because there's, in my opinion, well, we probably have to do some engineering and everything, but I don't think you're looking at two years for your view of construction. So that's something, I'll turn that over to Mr. Dudley, he's done many of these projects, and this one, this is the first time running through this particular project, this kind of grant, so I'm a little unfamiliar as to how we need to budget that going forward, so I'll turn that, if Mr. Dudley's got an answer for that.
I, I think you answered it. Like I said, the one that I have with Lafayette, TDOT kept that part close to their best, and they are doing the environmental, and they're, they're still in the process of it. And so this is state money and not federal, and so you're not quite held on the chopping block quite the same. And so, you know, we're, we're waiting for them to get done. So it has been, you know, a couple of years, and we're going to do the project, but, but TDOT is still, they found that out to an engineering firm in Nashville, and when they get, we'll go, we'll go forward. So, you know, I've learned working with TDOT, you gotta, you gotta be patient for the long haul. But again, if you look at the big picture of this, you are talking about nearly 100%. You're talking about a million dollar project in your community for a relatively small investment spread out over, over that timeframe. So I could, I'd be hesitant to tell you exactly how long it will take, because I don't want to say something and it not be right. But, you know, like I said, it grinds slowly, but it does continue to grind. And when, when the day is done, you've got a really solid project for a small investment. If, if we get it.
2022 would be the earliest, probably.
There may be, and I'm just, obviously, I don't know how, exactly how this project works, there may be some engineering cost earlier than that, but it'll be 10%, maybe even less than that on the overall cost, and so that should be reimbursed by the state. So you're not going to see, in my opinion, you're not going to see the bulk of the expenditures until probably the 2022 budget year.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
So how do you want to ask Mr. Goldie?
Well, I have to send, I have to send a letter of support saying that the county understands there is a match required from the county in terms of how the financing works. I asked Mr. Jewell if we could do a resolution, a support resolution, please, to back that up as well, other than just my letter, in case the state asks for it sometime in the future. Because they went back on the street state and asked for a lot of initial documentation which we furnished them, so I want to have as much documentation and support for the funding of it as I can get going forward. But what's going to be submitted with the grant application is a letter of support from the state, and we understand this is what the project costs can be. And then have that in our file in case the state asks for it later. But at this time, we're not amending the budget to add any expenditures in right now, this is just the filed application, and then see if we can get selected or what's going to happen in the future. Mr. Walsh, beat you to it, Mr. Ford.
Yes, sir. Any more discussion?
I'll answer questions, anybody that's got, that's really all the information I have. And Mr. Dudley, you have anything else to add?
No, sir. I just, I, I encourage you to apply for this, just again, because most grants are 60/40 or 50/50, so these are competitive because they're such a big investment, so if you can get them, they're, they're worthwhile.
Mr. Parry, if you have a question?
I think if, if we get the grant, we're going to have to use it, we can't refuse it, it's going to have to be used for what?
If we get the grant, the state will assume that we've committed, given that that's what the resolution is for, so we'll be.
But I mean, even if the county, I don't think it will, but it gets us some kind of financial trouble or something, we still got to go.
That's a good question, I don't know that. Now, Mr. Dudley, the question is, if we say we go ahead and apply for this and say we understand what the costs are, if a couple of years down the road, if the county gets into a financial bind, are we dedicated to doing this project, or is there still time to basically back out?
You could back out of it. I actually had a community that had to do that, because they did not have in their general fund the cash flow to pay 100% upfront. And I had explained to them the reimbursement process, but it just, you know, so we, we got out of it before they had done the, you know, expenditures. But, but, you know, I think, I think if you all, if you all budget and, and, you know, look, look at the cost estimated budget here, and then TDOT, you know, if it gets approved, then they'll sit down, you know, we, we'll, we'll look at it all again, and, you know, any questions come up then. But, you know, if, worst case scenario, if you needed to get out of it, you can. I mean, you know, you, you don't want to do that, but you, you could if you, you had to, I guess.
Motion approved.
I have a motion by Ms. Walsh, and a second by Mr. Ford. I'm sorry, Ms. Shane. He had his hand up. Commissioner Burden has the motion, and Mr. Ford has the second, to approve resolution 2028-703. Is there any other questions, Kathy? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It does pass. That concludes our business for the evening. So the comments, seeing none, Ms. Walsh.
Make a motion adjourned.
Have a motion adjourned. Second by Ms. Ford, I'm tired, please.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Senator, appreciate your participation.
Thank you, Mayor Chambers, I will talk to you soon, I'm sure. Great, thank you very much. That's it, thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you, sir.